Please do a roll call.
Certainly. Councilman Winkler is absent. Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward is absent. Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Mayor James.
I am here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. All right, would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And counsel, if you've had a moment to look at the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to the portion of our agenda for public comment. If anyone would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be, oh, I see what you're doing. You're staring at me because I skipped something because I'm working off two things. And we're going to put that on hold for one second. So think about all that I said, and I'm going to ask counsel if they will look at the minutes and approve the minutes of January 14th.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, now let me repeat what I said before, public comment. If anybody would like to come in and up and speak, I ask that they state their name, whether they live within the incorporated town limits. And if they could limit their talking points to three minutes, that would be appreciated. So do I have anybody who would like to step up and say anything? Okay. Gave me practice to say that twice, so that's good. Next on the agenda is our proclamation, which is Black History Month in February. And Councilman Jenkins, would you please read that?
Thank you. This is a proclamation, whereas Black History is a book rich with the American experience, but not many pages yet unexplored. And whereas Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. And whereas the 2025 theme of Black History Month, African Americans and Labor, focuses on the impact of work on the experience of Black people, ranging from the past agricultural labor of enslaved Africans to today's Black professionals, providing leadership as corporate executives and entrepreneurs. And whereas the town of La Plata encourages the preservation of our African American history and applauds the effects of such groups as the Willing Hepers Society and the African American Heritage Society, as well as the La Plata Historic Preservation Commission, to ensure that African American contributions and achievements are recognized for their integral part in the history of La Plata and the surrounding areas. Now therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, proclaim February 2025, Black History Month in the town of La Plata, in appreciation of the many achievements of the Plata's African American community and those across this nation and its history, and encourage our community to unite in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all peoples. And this is signed by the council of the town of La Plata, Janine James Mayer, David Winkler, Councilman, Matthew Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and David Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It goes on to our department monthly highlights, starting with Ms. Larson.
Good evening, counsel. Is there any questions regarding the monthly report?
Any questions? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mic on, mic on. Just there. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I just have, I guess, a question on the, I guess it's the, I'm not sure what, page 20 of 78. It's the, you compare the budget, total expenditures and budget remaining, percent remaining. Has there been, is there any impact on our expenses with respect to this? You know, we're doing a job search for the town manager and the planning director and additional expenses. Is that affecting the bottom line of our expenses?
Well, there is the expense of the recruiting costs.
Right.
Yeah.
So is that affecting our budget, though?
It could, but I'm not going to know exactly until closer to the end of the year because there might be other line items and contracting services that cover that.
So they are being, obviously, tracked.
Yeah, right now, there is nothing that's glaring that's going to be an issue other than the IT costs that we've added in, which you guys knew about when we changed the contract.
And I do believe that there was some questions answered by Councilman Winkler, which you've already responded to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Kennedy. All right, any questions for Director Kennedy? Go ahead.
Thank you again for the report. Just, I guess, a generalized question. Do we do exit interviews when folks resign?
Yes, I send an exit survey for everyone.
And so, I mean, is it a standardized questionnaire or is it just, and so you?
Somebody's termination date comes out.
So then I assume that that helps you and the town, I guess, identify any particular issues or concerns and then better able to attract candidates and also retain folks, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Current turnover. I mean, we're, council's aware of, of course, the, some of our top level positions that we're seeking candidates for right now. But in your report, it indicates that there were other four voluntary departures, I guess. What, how would you see our current turnover rate? Is it concerning? Is it, it doesn't seem normal in the last, let's say, six to eight months.
We have, we have had a bit of a rocky six to eight months.
Right.
But for 4% for a month, that's not out of, out of realistic. When you look at the Bureau Labor Statistics, you'll usually see 4% to 6% as normal.
As to what, I guess, type of employment?
That's a, that's a public sector industry number.
For the month? That wouldn't be reflective of our six to eight month or year over year, though, right? Are we, we're higher than that currently?
Year over year, we're probably a little higher than that, yes.
Do we see any themes as to why that might be the case, whether it's per department or just overall?
No, I think it's, from what I've seen, it's pretty general. The couple of things that have come back from the exit surveys, for those who have chosen to participate in it, I do see there has been a couple incidents, a couple instances where somebody has come back and said they had left for higher pay. You know, we've seen that, like, in the Public Works, they get their certifications, and then they, they've moved to other locations. The IT, that was just a situation where she had something pending before she accepted this job, and it came through after. So had that come earlier, we wouldn't have had that on our, on our radar at all.
I apologize. Did we, did we go into that knowing that she had something pending?
I had, I had known that, I mean, some candidates will disclose to me that they have other, that they've applied to other places. Usually you're applying to more than one place at a time. But I didn't, I didn't know she had a clearance out there, but she wasn't sure of the status on it. So she wasn't sure if she was going to get it or when that was going to happen.
Are there any particular departments right now that are seeing more turnover than others?
Or play, or three, I really, I track it based on police, Public Works, wastewater, and then Town Hall.
Sure.
So I would say we're probably, like, right now, Town Hall probably seems a little high, but we've also had some promotions and retirement in there, so that kind of reflects on our number, makes it look higher than it really is because I don't like to include retirement in turnover.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Sure.
Are there any departments currently that are at risk of higher turnover based on, you know, some of our discussions or just some of the trends that you've seen in, like you said, the four departments that you're looking at?
I don't think so because a lot of the different reasons for leaving, there's not, like, one that comes up overwhelmingly more than any of the others. You know, everybody leaves for a different reason. For example, the, the police officer that's leaving is a personal reason. You know, that has nothing to do with our culture, it has nothing to do with our pay, it's just, you know, they had something else going on that didn't allow them to stay here, you know, and that's an unfortunate situation. But we can't, we can't do anything about that. That's something that's external that I can't, I can never outpredict or outrecruit that.
Yeah, I mean, council's been made aware in the past, and this is kind of like multi-departmental, right? Like, there are some places we can't compete with depending on because we're a small town. We're not going to compete with, you know, WSSC, for example.
Sure.
Right? But are you aware of any particular departments voicing concerns about retention in the near future?
Not directly to me, I have not heard.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Director Mosry, come on down.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Questions for inspections?
All right.
Thank you again for the report. In your report, I see there's a huge amount of inspections. I guess the two categories are by plan check and then the one, I guess, that your office does. So Plan Check's doing a lot of inspections on different special, I mean, like, you know, all the specialty things. So they qualify to make those inspections? So they have the expertise to identify problems and issues?
They do. On new construction, there can be anywhere a dozen inspections.
So what would happen if they find a fault? I mean, just an example of, let's say they find something that's wrong in water land or something. What, what's the process to remedy that situation?
It is a issue and corrective order, and it gets sent back to us, we'll review it, and the corrections are made. The system moves along pretty well. We haven't had any instances where there's been any failures to comply. And in, in defense of most of this construction that's happening around town, they know the code, they're very aware of it, and there hasn't been any major issues.
So they go back and re-inspect it?
Yes.
That, that particular issue? So you haven't really seen any particular bumps in the road, given all the construction going on? No pun intended.
It actually is, everything's smooth.
And has it slowed down during the cold weather?
Not with Pine Grove and Magnolia Gardens and Rosewood Apartments. On the code enforcement side, property maintenance issues, it does slow down in cold weather.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up. If you could just please keep in mind in the future, if there's any need for more boots on the ground, so to speak, from the town's perspective, I just think it's vital for us to know, whether it's this council or whoever next council ends up being, because we never want to be in a position where, you know, you're doing your part, our town staff is doing their part. It's just too much. And as Councilman Jenkins, I think, was getting to, like, Plan Check may not have the same incentives that we do, who are accountable directly to our residents, right? So, you know, we've seen concerns from residents in AgroCopia, Kings Grant, and just all throughout town about certain alleged violations, right? Or actual that were remedied, but it's kind of a who polices the gatekeepers sort of a thing. And so these were questions we have for Director Harrington when she was here. And I just want you to know, like, if you support your department, we just got to know what you need. If there's ever a need, it's not because you're not doing enough. It's because there's so much building that I can't, I don't want the town to be in a position where we miss something that caused harm, you know?
Absolutely, completely understand. Since our last meeting, we've increased our presence over in Pine Grove since we had some discussion about that. So we're boots on the ground, and I appreciate the support from the council as far as additional personnel, if we should need it. But I can stand here today before you and tell you that we're, we're keeping an eye on everything, and for the moment, we're doing quite well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Chief. Come on down. All right.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Any questions from the police report?
Any questions?
Just, I guess, a couple of, thank you, a couple of comments. Thank you, Chief, again, for the report. The, the chart where you have the call for service, those two charts, I know they've increased it, but there was a point you're trying to make in that, in that there are increasing even with the sheriff's department helping? Or I'm not quite sure what you were trying to tell us.
What we're seeing is the calls for service were just La Plata police officers is rising.
Yeah, okay.
And the ones where we're going on the call with the sheriff's department is declining. This is the purpose of the slide.
Okay.
It's just sheriff's department's busy, you know, and so are we, so it's just kind of how it happens.
But they've always, as you, I think you stated before, they've always been very supportive of
Oh, absolutely.
of your department and your office as well.
Absolutely. If we, if something's going on and it's, it's needs immediate assistance, they're there with us.
And then, and the other chart where you look at, you talk about the Part One crime comparison and how La Plata makes up 6% of the county population, but south of La Plata, the trade center is 12.6 of counties' Part Two crimes. Is that because of the 301 corridor?
Yeah, it has a lot to do with it and the fact that we're a retail center. So we have nice grocery stores, we have some nice restaurants, we have the box stores, and that just brings people in. So although our, our community only makes up 6 and 1/3% of the county, we do experience about 12% of the Portland crimes.
So has there been any, and I know it varies by weather conditions and time of the year. Is there any uptake and any issues at the hotels and the big retail box stores? Thank you.
Yes, so Chief, thank you for your report, as always. I was curious because it looked as though our stops had gone down, vehicular stops, but some of those incidents are more serious in nature and greater. Do you see a trend there? Is there something that we can learn from those numbers?
Yeah, I think it's something we monitor. You know, one of the things I see is when we have a very busy month, our calls for service, our traffic stops tend to go down, and vice versa. If we dump a lot of county calls, then there's probably time for the haulsters to do traffic.
Sorry, Kelly. Just seems that 40 impaired driving arrests, like, that going up 25%, that, that's a lot. I don't know if that's, I mean, we have a lot less vehicle stops, and that, that's.
And one thing, these take a lot of time.
Yeah.
So you may not be making 10 car stops if you're tied up with an impaired driving arrest. And if you need a drug recognition expert because they're under the influence of some sort of drug, it takes even longer. So, yeah. It's kind of cause and effect, you know, it's, it's just something we're going to be monitoring.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
May, the, your report on the photo enforcement, which is, that's a lot of violations. Is there an estimate of how many of those were actually ticketed?
Well, when we look at this, one of the things I'm trying to get the vendor to let me know is that this include the warning period, the first 30 days of warning period?
Right.
And they're trying to separate that data for us. This is the report we're able to kick out, but good, bad, or indifferent, there was 4,800 violations.
So I would assume, or maybe I shouldn't, but this is a deterrent to stop speeding or at least tap it down?
We're hoping.
Me too. Thank you.
And I just need to say that that video on Project Lifesaver was really well done.
Yeah.
And hopefully, others will call up and get some more. Have you gotten any feedback from that?
I don't believe we've had anybody else sign up, but last I looked, it had a couple thousand views.
Good.
So we're hoping, you know, but we appreciate the council's support with that and allowing us to contract Laura to, to help us get the word out.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Director Phipps. Any questions for Director Phipps? Okay, there you go. You're the lucky one today. All right, and come on down, Acting Director Wood. They didn't have any questions for Kelly because they're saving them all for you. You ready?
Yeah.
Any questions for Acting Director Wood?
I have one question and one comment. So I see you had some more water leaks. I guess that's primarily caused by the cold weather?
Yeah, we had quite a few. I guess the temperatures.
Yeah.
We ain't seen temperatures like this in a few years, so the ground shifting and snapping the lines.
And it probably happened in the middle of the night, right?
Yeah, we had one Sunday, and then we had one yesterday, so.
So you go through a process of telling, telling people that, hey, we got to shut the water off so we fix the line?
Yeah.
Right, okay. And then I just wanted to offer a compliment. There were several residents who let me know via in-person or email of, they appreciate the snow clearing effort you guys made.
Yeah.
So thank you for that. And I said that I would pass that. Party?
We worked like 20 some hours straight that day, or two days.
You did a great job, and I know that you are fielding some calls for people that might have had their mailboxes damaged. And there is a policy that we do have in place, so they are contacting us and we bring it through you. So thank you for that and being attentive to that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, first off, thanks, thanks. I mean, you're doing a great job, your team's doing great. Keeps our town on track, so I appreciate that. I know there were some questions from folks in AgroCopia as to status of some sidewalk repair over there. I think it's been kind of back and forth a little bit for a while, and I know we've had some, of course, some changes in, in the department. So I don't know if you're aware of what the progress is on that, or we can chat later, that's fine, too.
Yeah, we're aware. We have a, a list of all the neighborhoods that need a sidewalk repair, and we're going to work on putting a bid package together to bring to you guys. And we really can't do any concrete work until spring because of the freezing and thawing.
Right. As far as a bid and the timeframe for that, what do you think it would be so that I can inform those folks?
We may have it together by the next, well, I don't.
Tell them something.
That's what I was, there's still some work that needs to be done to it, like, some updates. And we're working on that.
Okay.
I'm not going to give you a date, but hopefully, we'll definitely wait before spring starts so we can get on it.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
That concludes our department reports. Next is matter of council discussion. We have the USI Consulting Group online. And Director Kennedy, do you need to step up here just so you're part of this? And you can, you can take the mic and sit down if you'd like, and just so that you can facilitate the conversation?
Sure. So counsel, we have Rich and Freddie online from USI. They have put together a little presentation for you to help hopefully answer some of the, the questions about the challenges that we have, that we see moving forward with the Plan Three that council had selected. So they're here to kind of give you an overview of what, of what we've got to work with and the challenges ahead and kind of their opinion about where, where we're going to be as we go through it. So I will hand it over to them.
Thank you. All right, USI, it's all yours.
Great, thank you. I may ask, does everyone have a copy of the presentation that we prepared, or is it possible to bring it up on the screen?
We have a copy in our agenda packet.
I think Kelly will be able to.
She's working on it.
Yep, she'll share that screen.
Okay, no worries. There we go, I think she's starting to share. Well, I'd like to introduce myself and my partner, Rich. We are from USI Consulting Group. So my name is Frederica Daniels. I go by Freddie, it's a little easier. And my partner, Rich, will introduce himself in a moment, but we are from USI. And USI is an actuarial consulting firm. We do other services, too, but we are here today. We've been asked by La Plata to present to you some processes and challenges related to the pension plan. It seems like the town has, or their pension plan, they are part of through the state plan. So we've been asked as an independent advisor to comment on some of the considerations that I think the town is considering for enhancements in pension. And if you can, thank you for bringing up the presentation. If you don't mind to turn the slide, I'm going to briefly share the agenda that we plan to go over with you. But throughout the presentation, please feel free to ask questions if that works better for you. Our goal is to have an interactive conversation. We feel that may be better suited to what's needed. So after our introductions, I will give you a quick overall update on what we plan to cover. We're going to talk about some implementation challenges and processes. We will make some general comments on the cost and fiscal impacts that you may consider with adding a new pension plan. And then we might briefly talk about just some alternatives that might have been brought up in the past that you might be able to use existing infrastructure to potentially also achieve the same goals. And then, of course, we can also finish up with any questions. So if we continue up to the next slide, please. Like I said, my name is Frederica, and I've been with USI for almost 30 years now. I'm an enrolled actuary, and I work on pension plan administration, development, administration of calculations and preparing actual reports. And I work on plans that are sponsored by governments, municipalities, private corporate pension plans, and many other different types. So hopefully, I'm well-suited to be able to present to you tonight and to answer any questions you have. I'm going to turn it over to Rich for a moment.
Sure, thank you very much, Freddie. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, I figured that out. So thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Richard Sitch. I am an actuary also from USI, of course. I've been doing this for 30-plus years, doing consulting on defined, all types of defined benefit plans, you know, state plans, municipal plans, town plans, private sector as well. I focus on plan design and other, I'll say, non-recurring type of projects. I also do valuations, GASB, 67, 68 reports, and I work on post-retirement medical.
Great, thanks, Rich. And just to give you a very quick layout for the footprint of USI, we really are a nationwide firm. We are headquartered in Glastonbury, Connecticut, and interestingly enough, that's where both, and Rich, myself and I, both reside and work in our daily office. But we are amongst the top 10 retirement consulting firms in the U.S. We do similar work as to the Aons and Hewitts and Mercers and Boltins and other consulting firms out there. So I think we have a competitive advantage and also vast understanding of what the town is hoping to achieve or what they're currently part of in terms of the state plan. You know, we definitely have a few hundred professionals. So if it's something that Rich and I don't know, I think the basic takeaway is that we can ask our coworkers, but together, You know, we definitely have a few hundred professionals. So if it's something that Rich and I don't know, I think the basic takeaway is that we can ask our coworkers, but together, interestingly enough, to say, we have over sixty years of combined experience. What we also have at our fingertips at USI, other internal groups to help with our expertise. We have Regulatory and Compliance Division that helps us with plan document and legal work. We do employee communications. We have our own internal investment advisory firm called USI Advisors. And we also have our DC group that works analogous with our DB client plans, and we work on both qualified and non-qualified plan support also. So we do have a vast variety of consulting capabilities at USI Consulting Group. All right, so enough about us, but more about you and what you're looking to achieve, if you don't mind jumping into the next slide, please. I'm gonna start off and talk about what, how we are overseeing what we think has been asked of us and what's being considered by the town to potentially move out of the state pension plan or do an add-on for the defined benefit plan to the participation in the state pension plan. And the way we look at this is there are three overall major, major items to consider. And these processes and timing and cost, they overlap. It's not as if one happens first, then the next, and then the final one. But if you look at it from a triangle piece, you have each corner that you really should consider and make sure your ducks line up in a row as you're going through your design phase and into the implementation and into the actual calculations. And I'm sure none of this is new to you. I know you're already part of a state pension plan. However, a lot of the administration might be done at the state level and not at an individual level. When you become a sponsor of your own defined benefit plan, similar and analogous to what you do on the defined contribution plan side, there are some additional responsibilities that you take on. So we just want to make sure we help point out those for consideration. Obviously, when you're going through the process to implement new plan, you need to think about a few things. So as shown in that first column, you need to think about the planned benefits. What is the design of the plan? What is your overall goal? You need to talk, think about the cost of the plan. What is your annual estimated contribution level? You need to make sure that you're documenting what you're doing. So again, while the state might dot the i's and cross the t's on the documentation, at this point for you, when you sponsor your own plan, you have additional items needed to make sure you have a planned document, a planned trust, you need a custodial account for the assets, you need investment advisors, you need a funding policy that should be discussed at the board level. Those are just some examples of the additional documentation that you would take on with a new plan. Then, of course, there's the administration, and it's not just the internal administration that the retirement committee has to perform each year or quarter. You need to potentially have a pension attorney, an ERIS advisor, you need an actuary to do the calculations, you need an auditor to do the GASB reports each year, you need an investment advisor to overlook the custodial accounts, and most importantly, you need the human resources internally. You need administration team and HR to work with these different professionals. So throughout that process, you have to be able to juggle many balls at once while also thinking of timing and cost. And not going through all this in too much detail, but timing relates to the design phase, and I think that's where we are right now. That's part of the goal of you asking us to come to the meeting so we could talk about the design of a supplemental pension plan. Then you have the documentation phase, and that includes hiring all the administration parties I just talked about under the process. Timing also includes calculations. You have initial calculations upfront for new plan. You have ongoing calculations for your yearly evaluation of the accounting GASB reports, certain state, government, or municipality disclosure requirements. And then, of course, of course, you have the costs. And I look at costs in a few ways. You have the initial setup fees that's going through the process to start a new plan. If you start a plan, you might file the plan document with the IRS, so there's some additional fees on the legal side that you have to consider. Then you have the initial year of setting up your balance sheet and contribution requirements, and then, of course, if you start a new plan, you'll have your ongoing fees. So different types of costs integrated at different points in time and at different points in the process, but this is something that we can work with you on and integrate with the current actuary for the current state plan, also if that's what you're interested in having us do. So again, not to overwhelm you, but just pointing out the different pieces and bucket each of these processes within three topics for you to help think through everything and making sure we're dotting all i's and crossing t's, as I mentioned. So that was a lot to digest on the administrative side. I can answer any questions if you have some at the point, at this point. I'm gonna turn it over to Rich to start talking a little bit more through the actual considerations on the plan itself, if there's no immediate questions, but I'll pause here.
I don't see any.
Okay, thanks.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Freddie. So on this slide, we want to talk a little bit more detail. So what, what Freddie basically talked about is the thirty-thousand-foot level of what it is you, you're gonna need to do. Just to drill down a little bit on this, so you're gonna be looking to integrate, so to speak, with the Maryland State Plan and use that as an offset to the plan you're trying to implement. So as our understanding is, you're gonna be looking to implement a plan sponsored by the town using Maryland State benefits in offset. Now, is that doable? Yeah, it's doable. Devil's in the details, right? So one of the things you have to do is you have to go through and kind of try to think of every possible scenario or every situation on how to calculate the benefit. Let me give you an example. Let's say somebody works for the town, and after ten years, they decide to terminate, they're gonna leave, they're gonna go work someplace else. So how is that benefit gonna be calculated? Presumably, it's gonna be based on service and pay with the town, offset with some kind of a state benefit. So how do you get a state benefit at a particular point in time when the person leaves? I'm just gonna make something up. Somebody's leaving at the end of January, the end of this week. And you need to calculate the benefit that the town is obligated to pay this person, so you need the January thirty-first state benefit to use as an offset. Is that something that's doable? Is the state gonna work with you on coming up with those benefits? Now, the other challenge here is because you have no control over the state plan, as the state makes changes to its program, you are going to feel the impact of that through either an increase or decrease in cost of the benefits you're providing. Depending on whether the Maryland State Plan increases benefits or decreases, or if they put in a new tier, how do you, how are you gonna handle that? And then, and you get into other situations where people either retire, there's death and disability benefits, you know, for, for retirement benefits. Are you going to model after the existing state plan, or are you going to want to provide your own early retirement benefits, so to speak, or retirement eligibility? And so what happens is once you, if you designed that retirement program, or when somebody's eligible for early retirement, and then the state now changes when people are eligible for state benefits. So again, there's some, there's some leveraging going on there as far as costs, either up or down, and it's something you don't have control over, so it's something you're gonna have to monitor very closely to see how it impacts your plan. And if there's a change in the state plan, will it require a change in your plan? So there's a lot of kind of housekeeping and monitoring that's gonna have to happen. And as I mentioned before, you're gonna have to think about all these different situations because the plan document that Freddie talked about is basically the Bible. That's, that plan document is gonna tell you how to calculate a benefit. So back to my earlier example, if somebody worked for the town for ten years and then left, let's say they go work someplace else that's still covered by a state benefit, and they work in that other town or municipality for ten years, and then they come back. So you're gonna have to kind of work through, what do you do with somebody who has a break from the town but stays in the state plan? So those are kind of some of the details that you're gonna have to kind of work through. I've listed a whole bunch of other stuff here, people transferring, you know, if they're currently in, in, in Public Works and they're covered by the plan, but they transfer to another department, they're no longer covered. How are you gonna handle that benefit? And pull in the state accrued benefits at the same time. So these are all kinds of the details that you have to go through and figure out, so it's documented in the plan document. Death and disability is another challenging one, is how you integrate the death and disability benefits in this plan with those benefits that are provided by the state. So there's, there's a lot to think about here and a lot that you have to go through to figure out how you wanna handle each of these situations. Again, because the plan document needs to document what happens in these situations. Will you think of every possible situation? No, you won't. But there's always gonna be situations that come up later. I've never seen a plan document that covers every single possible situation that comes up because just unusual stuff happens that you just never think about. But this is just to give you some kind of an idea of all the things you have to think about on how to integrate with the state plan.
Rich, have you ever done one? This is Mayor James. Have you ever done a plan that included both Public Works and a police department?
What's more common is usually they're in one or the other. So they're either in a state plan or they're in a town plan. I, I do work on one nonprofit that integrates with a state plan, and I can tell you it's always been a challenge to try to estimate or come up with what benefits are they entitled to from the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this slide?
No, yes. Thank you for presenting that kind of a high view. It sounds like this, these are kind of common considerations when putting together any plan, and I'm assuming that, I mean, we'd have assistants choosing these scenarios, right? I mean, you guys would give, you know, standards of practice, and then there would be decisions to be made thereafter?
Correct. What's unusual about your situation is you are integrating a state program you have no control over. So that, that makes it a little bit more challenging. The more typical is you put in your own defined benefit plan, and it's not integrated with a state plan. That's, that's more common, and that's, air quotes, easier. Yes, yes, you still have to go through all those situations, but you don't have to deal with an integration aspect.
Understood. And look, I appreciate you presenting it in a way that identifies the challenges, but you're also identifying the potential solutions there, so thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Next slide, please.
Okay. So we kind of talked about identifying all these different situations, and, and that's what I mean when I refer to the plan document. So the plan document is gonna lay out what happens when somebody reaches normal retirement. What happens if somebody reaches early retirement eligibility? What happens if somebody terminates and leaves? What happens if somebody terminates, leaves, and comes back? What if somebody transfers from one department to another department? So that plan document is where we kind of lay out everything, and hopefully an internal administrative guide on, on how you kind of deal with these situations. What you wanna do is you wanna apply all these provisions consistently to anybody else in the same situation. Some municipalities do like to file for what's called a determination letter. It's not required, but it, you know, some people view it as helpful. It's basically going to the IRS and just asking them to say, yes, this plan is a qualified retirement plan. So something else to consider, whether you feel like you wanna do that or not do that. As Freddie mentioned earlier, you will have to go through and set up plan trust documents, custodial agreements, investment policies, funding policies. How are you gonna fund this program? Just to give you some idea, so typically, we would do a calculation where we say, here's the recommended or actuarily developed employer contribution. And the next year, that number might go up a lot, it might go down a lot, and you might say, well, why did that happen? Well, usually the variables are, well, either assets did well or didn't do well. Maybe there's some changes in the data, but you have that added complexity of, well, the state changes program. So now that the state changes program, it's changing how much you have to contribute to the plan. If the state adds another tier at some point in time, then that's gonna be another change to the plan document. How do you handle somebody who's in another tier at the state level? Do you handle it the same way? Do you handle it differently? In addition to the funding policy, you also have to do what's referred to as evaluation. So the actuary would typically calculate how much is the recommended contribution to the plan. You will have investment meetings focusing on, on this new plan, where you kind of talk about the investments and how, how they're doing. Should you be more aggressive, less aggressive? Should you fund more? Should you fund less? Internally, you're gonna need some administrative procedures, a manual on how, you know, the HR or admin team is gonna follow these things, creating election forms, making sure your, your forms are compliant with any legal requirements. So there's, there's a lot to do on the plan admin side, plan documents, administrative procedures manual. That's something you're gonna wanna try to button up and try to cover as many of the things you can think about. But that's, that's another thing that, that's kind of part of the process, so to speak.
And Rich, I just wanna jump in and add a comment on this, and while it might not be stated in one of the bullet points, I mentioned earlier, I opened up with, you know, timing. We talked about cost and the process and the timing and all these items to think through. So we've spoken with Monica briefly, and she's given us some ideas of what this committee might be considering for timing. But as you can imagine, when starting a plan from scratch, the implementation, just before you even get this off the ground and you allow participants to enter, there's a lot of details, as, as Rich said, the devil's in the details, but it takes a lot of time to get this up and running. And while defined benefit plans, traditional plans have been around for more than fifty years since ERIS has started in seventy-four, so a little over fifty years at this point, it doesn't mean that anyone has the exact answer, just snap your fingers and make this work so, so quickly. And to develop the documents, the manuals, the election forms, et cetera. So I just wanna point out that we haven't presented yet anything on exact timing, nor do we have any slides up about timelines, because we're not exactly sure of what the overall intention may be or what the final outcome may be. But I just want everyone also to keep in mind that while there's a lot of documents to be developed and administrative procedures to be established, this does take some time to work through the kinks and then to prepare this. So I know we're just in the beginning of the year. I'm not sure if the fiscal year, we get towards the middle year, if that's the expectation, but I, I just wanna throw out there's some general expectations, maybe even for discussion at the end. But it's just the overall timing on this, because it's, you're probably looking at a good somewhere between six to nine months, maybe even nine to twelve months, depending on the idiosyncrasies of the plan that you decide upon, to actually get this in place. So just, just to consider not just doing the calculations and not just setting up the plan documents, but the time it takes to do that. And sorry if I put a cloud over some of this exciting news, but I just wanna point out that we keep that in mind, because I do like the earlier comment that while we presented challenges, I think what we are also doing is providing some solutions, or at least the backbone, right? We're doing an outline for you of all the things to consider, how you consider them, and technically even in what order you should consider them. So just keeping all this in mind, it is definitely a lengthy process with challenges.
Yeah, no, thank you, Freddie. That's important to touch on that and just kind of give you a sense. We talked about trying to think of all the situations. Once you think of all the situations, and I'm gonna oversimplify it, you kind of pass that information over to a pension attorney and say, draft a document. While they're drafting a document, they will probably come back and say, what do you wanna do in this situation? What do you wanna do in that situation? They'll come up with some things that, you know, perhaps we hadn't thought of. Then, once that document is drafted, they're gonna pass that document around for review, for everybody to go through and say, is this what you want the plan to provide? So there, there is a process there that takes time, and attorneys oftentimes will send out the draft, you provide some comments, you look at the different aspects, retirement, disability, death, termination. Yeah, I think that's what we want. You might come back and say, well, no, 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 that's not what we're thinking. We're thinking of this. So there's gonna be some back and forth just on the plan draft. Once the, the plan is done dra, being drafted, everybody's, yeah, that's what we want. Then you get into the summaries and administrative guide and how you actually go through and calculate those benefits.
Rich, I have a question on this slide. It says that the determination, the initial determination letter from the IRS. So it's not required but helpful, because they can, I think Monica had said, they can actually deny a plan that is created. Is that correct?
It's possible for them to come back and say, no, the plan's not qualified. Typically, if there's anything they're concerned about, they will come back to you and they will base, they'll, they'll work with you and say, we have a concern about this section, this part, or that part. And say, you need to change that, and then you'll have to make a decision if you're okay with that change or not.
Yeah, and Rich, I'll, I'll add to that. I don't think I've ever really seen the IRS, like you said, deny in the end an overall plan, unless, of course, something completely ridiculous, you know, was submitted. But there are some what they call standard or prototype plans, some somewhat what you might call cookie cutter. You have a handful of options, and you pick one option that's compliant, like a pre-standardized plan document. I think when Rich and I were talking about this, and which is why we felt it important to present to the group, is that the pension plan in general, the type of provisions you're thinking through, or that we've asked you to think through, are pretty standard. You have retirement, death, disability, termination, transfers, vesting, service, final average pay, et cetera. Those are your standard bullet points, or I shall, I'll call definitions in your plan document. It's exactly what you do and how you do the offset. So having the integration with a state plan, which Rich pointed out a few times, for which you have no control over, and that might be where I see the IRS just having the most questions or needing to work with you. So again, I don't think that what's being asked is that we're queuing ourselves up for any type of overall failure or denial from the IRS, if that's helpful advice or feedback. I just think it's depending on the idiosyncrasies and the scenarios or the options presented, that, one, I think it's actually very important. So again, while not required, my recommendation may strongly be. So again, while not required, my recommendation may strongly be to actually file for that determination letter. Because the IRS really is the be all, end all on giving you that, you know, seal of approval in making sure your plan is a qualified plan. I think the last thing you want to do is offer something and promise something and then find out that the IRS might have an issue or a problem with that or a participant might end up receiving some sort of benefit and having some sort of tax consequence or unintended, unintended consequence of a determination that you have to go back and try to fix after the fact that you've made a promise. We wouldn't want to see any sort of promises made and then have any lawsuits against something promised that you might not be able to deliver on if the IRS doesn't bless that. So I think those are the type of considerations. So sorry to muddy the waters a little bit. And again, I don't mean to always be that gray cloud coming over. There definitely are silver linings and everything that we're trying to do or work with you on. But if you haven't been able to tell by now, I'm definitely erring on the side of caution in a lot of the information I'm providing. I always try to present the options, but the pros and cons of each so that the committee can make an informed decision on what you'd like to do going forward.
Thank you. And a follow-up question too on this slide. I don't see anywhere where it has an employee contribution. And I know just from the limited research that I have done, that a 401K, usually the employee is contributing six to eight percent. And then like in a 457, they can go five to 10%. What do you see as the employee contribution for, and the enhanced pension plan?
Well, it, it varies from municipality to municipality. Some, some do require employee contributions, some do not. It's typically part of a bargaining process or cost. You know, if, if what you're looking to provide is just too costly, you might be looking for employees to share in that cost. If it's, if it's manageable and this is something that you've told employees that you, you're definitely going to do, you, you may or may not want to include employee contributions. But yes, you could certainly add employee contributions to a program if you'd like.
And what we've seen is that if my understanding is correct, I'm definitely not an expert in the state plan, but just from some research, I understand that the members who participate in the state plan currently pay approximately seven percent of pay. And that might be something you consider in your supplemental plan is to ask them to continue to pay in the same way if you decide to require employee contributions, just to keep it even.
Great, thank you.
And if I can interject real quick, Ms. Ann Mayer, when we selected Plan Three, it did not include an employee contribution.
But again, that's just a concept. Now we're taking this concept and trying to make it into something. So I think anything is as on the table right now or everything's on the table. Any questions on this slide deck for, from council? All right, next one, please.
Okay, thank you. And our last slide on challenges is really from an HR perspective. Your HR system is going to need to be able to track eligibility, people transferring, you know, dates of any changes, earnings rules, you know, versus your plan versus the state plan. So there are going to be some potential programming changes that are going to need to happen to your HR system. So hopefully the HR system that you're currently using has the capability to track these things, you know, transfers, track it between different departments and, you know, what dates did those happen? So that you can calculate the benefits correctly. So this is just something else to think about on the HR side is what is your HR system capable of doing?
And also, Rich, just to add on this one, if you think about it, in my understanding for the state plan, is when somebody's ready to retire, LaPlata might send information to the state and provide them with whatever's needed, whether it's earnings and service and date history. But that the state actuary will then do the calculations and work with the state pay agent to do the benefits. So that another item where it might not be spelled out on this slide is that in the supplemental plan, not only does HR essentially need to finalize the calculations and do the offset, but it also may require somebody from HR being trained on the system for the custodial count. And generally, a lot of custodial counts will require a representative, like the plan sponsor, the administrator, the HR team, whoever's qualified, to then actually initiate payment and do the process. So you almost become a fiduciary again as part of your HR team with this new plan in setting up the payment. So you're doing some fiduciary work and some administrative work, not just internally, but externally with your custodial account. So just another coordination of items to think through when it comes to the challenges.
Yep. Thank you, Freddie.
Any questions? All right, going on to the next one.
Okay, so I know we've talked a lot about design and challenges and the timing of the process. So I'm just going to touch very briefly on this last slide, because I think you've been presented with some alternatives. There were a handful of presented in a study, I believe, from your current incumbent actuary. So you've probably thought through a lot of the cost and the fiscal impacts. But just to reiterate a few, and this might be a great way to summarize all the information that Rich and I've been talking about, so we can have a more in-depth conversation or answer any other questions. Just to, so to summarize, you've got the startup cost, the plan. Now, we've discussed the process, right? You've got plan design. Let's agree on the provisions. Let's get them into a plan document. Let's do your internal procedures. Then you usually have your Arisa attorney come up with, you call a summary plan description, which is basically putting all this information into layman's terms so that you can then hand out that summary to your employees. So there's a cost associated there. And then, of course, you have the actual hard dollar cash cost for your annual contribution requirement. So that's all from the startup. That's that year one item that you just didn't have last year. Now, once your plan's set up, I'm sure as expected, you have your ongoing administrative expenses. So we talked about there's many different members that you're working with, actuaries, attorneys, accountants, fiduciaries, investment advisors, et cetera. It's coordinating all those service providers and paying the annual cost for those providers, which right now technically the state probably pays a good bulk of those services for the existing state plan members association. But in addition, once you set up the plan, now that you would have your own custodial count and investments for this supplemental plan, you've got other type of risks to think about. You've got the long-term risk of the investments and your management of the funds. And Rich touched upon this earlier too, so I won't go into the detail, but it really depends on your population and funding policy, as to what those ongoing costs would look like from a cash perspective. You might have some increases or decrease in your contribution levels. I think the percentage of pay that you pay for the state plan, which is somewhere approximately 11 to 12% on average of employee salaries that you put into the plan, that amount is pretty predictable. And it may go up or down each year, but you have a large pool statewide of participants. When you have a smaller pool, just those participating in your state plan, the new plan, or the new version of the state plan sponsored by LaPlata, you'll have a smaller pool of participants. So large spikes in salary or one-off events in retirement or unexpected turnover, those type of things could impact the contribution levels in your budget more rapidly or even more significantly than you might find on average each year with your state contribution required. So just some things to think about there. Again, I was just mentioning the portion of your contribution cost is unpredictable. It really depends on the state offset. And then some additional items, I'm sure you've thought through this, but you would just have to work with the audit and accounting team as to how the new cost associated with your plan impacts the town's balance sheet. And then also there are additional Gatsby reports and financial audits needed for this plan. So you have to work through the timing of those and the cost of those type of reports in addition to just the annual actuarial report. So different, different calls and financial things to think through from a cash perspective, cash flow on the contribution, but also a cash flow from your budget. So hopefully this is, this overview that Rich and I provided has given you some additional items to think about in addition to what the committee has already considered for possible solutions. If you don't mind turning to the next slide, I'll mention just very briefly, I don't have too many details on this, but I, I felt remiss if we just didn't mention that. We are aware, of course, the participants participate in a traditional defined benefit program with the state. But we're also aware that you have a defined contribution type plan through a 457B or 401A setup. And there's definitely plenty of pros and cons to the existing plans that you have. But if the overall desire is to isolate some additional more competitive benefits, specifically even for the police and public work plans, I know there might have been presentations or considerations for, if you don't do this detailed offset plan or additional new plan on the pension side, might you consider doing something with your current infrastructure on the DC side? And in doing something there, you know, there are pros and cons, like I mentioned. And you could almost simply put something together where you have a target, for example, like a targeted contribution percent that you make one consistent contribution percent for the police and then figure out another rate for the public works group. I think though, one of the cons against that is though it's hard to manage and it would require a lot of active engagement on the employees. And not every employee is similarly situated. You might have, for example, one police new hire who has a longer tenure to go before they're ready to retire versus someone who might have already been in the system for 15 years and might only have five or 10 years left. So obviously those have been in the system longer. If you want to provide higher benefits sooner to make them, quote, whole, it might cost more upfront than it is for a non-simply situated person. So again, there still are pros and cons and something to think about. But you have an existing plan in place, so to build off your current infrastructure is something we still encourage this committee to think about. So I just wanted to bring that up and have a slide to show you something about that. But if we turn to the next slide, we're at the end of our presentation and still open for questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Freddie and Rich, for a very thorough presentation on that. There's a lot to think about. Boy, sometimes I think my job's hard. I would never want to do your job. Woo, that's a lot of numbers there. We've got our members of our finance committee here as well that have been listening in on this presentation. But I'm going to open questioning from the dais to see if there are any questions at this time.
Hi, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you again for taking the time to do this. This is appreciated. And I certainly know a lot more about pensions than I ever thought I would know. But, so I appreciate the effort and it is complicated. I was just curious, are there any templates or other examples from other existing communities that while each, each community is different, is there any best practices that could be gleaned for LaPlata? And frankly, specifically for the police portion of it? Like Rockville, Maryland, for instance?
Yeah, I think the word of advice we would give you is to focus on the accrued benefit and use the accrued benefit as an offset. Because it's a, it's a fixed number. It doesn't get into the different optional forms of benefit and it makes it more practical to be able to administer an offset plan.
Could you, sorry, I don't mean to jump into Councilman Jenkins' question, but could you just explain that in layman's terms, if you would?
Thank you. I was going to ask that too.
Sure, sure. So every defined benefit plan has a formula on how you calculate, I'm going to call the, the basic benefit. And then, once you have that, every plan will go through and explain or detail, how do you calculate all the different optional forms? How do you calculate early benefits? If you focus on the benefit that comes from the calculation of the basic formula and use that as an offset and then take the net and then apply your plan to the net benefit, it's, it's a little bit more practical to administer.
And Rich, maybe I can. That was even.
That, that really didn't, no.
Okay, I'm sure Randy and Karen and those guys were like, can we get this? Joe gets this? Yeah, okay, that was really good. That was a lot of words.
I'm not sure I got the answer either, but I, I guess I'm just trying to make it, maybe I'm just too simple, but it just seemed like there may be best practices that could be applied to one, frankly, to the police versus public works or not public works.
But you've got to remember, they're tied together and that's what they're trying to work on.
Well.
That was the objective.
But that would lead to another suggestion later on, so.
Yeah, but the majority of council wanted it together, so that's what they're trying to work on for that. So there's that challenge.
If, if, I'm not sure if this is helpful, I don't mean to confuse anything, but maybe to piggyback off Rich's point, simply put in layman's terms too, is that you're, you're looking at targets or our understanding is you're looking at target. So for example, for a formula, it's based on some years of service times a targeted percent of pay. So I think that's the key thing that I would recommend too, is if the current state plan has a particular target, my understanding, I think it's like 1.8% of pay times years of service. Now, there's some caps and offsets, et cetera, but in general, you have a target. I think that's what we're trying to say is if right now that 1.8% times years of service doesn't seem to be as competitive for the town and you're trying to design an enhanced pension plan program, is that's what you want to focus on, is what level are you trying to obtain while still balancing that with cost? And if, to, to maybe use the phrase of the question asked, is there any cookie cutter language or boilerplate, you know, templates out there? I might just refer you back to our presentation and that first slide on challenges. That really is your template. I, I sort of mentioned earlier that when drafting up a plan document is you have this lengthy document and there's different things to consider. And the basic items to consider are laid out on that template, if, if you will. If you'd use that one slide almost as a template. You have to make sure you define your types of benefits, so death, disability, retirement. You have to define your vesting rules. You have to define service. You have to figure out how to deal with transfers. So really, those are just some examples of what's on a cookie cutter template program. Is there's always at least a handful of major things to consider, but the actual target percent of pay, your benefit formula, that's the main thing that I believe you're trying to target. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the overall goal of this is to try to enhance the program for a retirement pension to attract and retain employees in these positions. So I, I don't know if that helped. I, I hope it does. But just to, I, I tried to focus in on your question on the boilerplate template setup. And I think a setup is focusing on your formula and then those basic provisions.
Well, just a clever, I, I didn't, maybe I misstated it. It's really not a boilerplate, because I, I think I stated that each community is different when I was suggesting its best practices. So, but, but I understand your, your response. Thank you.
Yes, my apologies if I stereotyped it as boilerplate. You're right. It's, while each town and each program has different targets, different percentages, different definitions of age and service, they do have different combinations of those provisions. It, for me, the boilerplate items are those provisions. It's just what, what do you choose from? It's like having a menu where you have an appetizer, a main entree, then a dessert, right? And it's like, that's your boilerplate setup of a plan. And then it's just what, what are you going to order for, for dinner that night off of that menu?
That's an analogy that I really can relate to. So thank you. Councilman, do you have some questions?
Yes. Thank you both for your presentation. I appreciate it. It seems like what we've been given tonight is just a general idea of what the work is going to look like in putting together, you know, a plan such as this, right? So it's going to be a lot of work. It sounds like it can be done, is what I'm hearing. Yes? Yes, okay. Getting nods for the record. What I was curious about is Madam Mayor referred to, she said Plan Three. Did you get a copy of Bolton's Plan Three as it relates to our goals of what council was looking for as far as a plan going forward?
Yes, we were provided a copy of that Bolton study that had four or five different types of alternatives. And within one of the alternatives, which is what we focused on, is adding a supplemental plan with the state offset. There were three options and our understanding is it's that third option that you are leaning towards.
Okay, so you're not just giving us general advice as to plans, but the specific plan that was given to you, this is how you've applied, you know, your expertise and knowledge to us tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that is helpful, because I know in, in the packet, which is really super helpful, it just didn't get very specific as to, of course, you're not going to have specifics as to numbers as to the cost yet, right?
Correct.
Because we've, we've heard some feedback from some saying that it's going to be exceptionally, essentially it's undoable as to cost. But you guys, as an actuarial firm, you, you can't really even tell us that yet. You don't have data?
Correct. Absent confirming the targeted percentages, even if we assumed the third suggestion of starting a new plan, without knowing the participants, the promised benefits, the service and all the details, it's quite impossible to make those calculations. But again, our understanding after reading. again, our understanding, after reading Bolton's report, is that they use some general assumptions based on the population they are aware of, that it's covered on the existing state plan. And they did do some cost projections from both the startup and then the annual ongoing percentage of pay. So my understanding is those were presented. And Rich and I would have a very difficult time assessing, are those reasonable or not, without any kind of data to mirror and mimic?
Okay, I understand. As it relates to kind of the administrative aspect of it, which you mentioned, even the alternatives seemed, I mean, the alternative seemed as significant, at least on the employee, as it was administrative burden on maybe staff for the current plan. Are some of these administrative tasks able to be outsourced?
Yes, in general. I believe when mentioned, not only could they, they almost should be. For example, we would suggest hiring an investment advisor to help the committee make informed decisions on how to invest pension funds in a new custodial account. We would advise you to hire a pension attorney, also referred to as an ERISA attorney, to build and do the plan document. We would also potentially recommend that you could look at the cost of either programming or changing your internal administrative HR systems versus outsourcing and hire a benefit administration team who might have an online system set up that can help you track some of this information. So it doesn't mean you can, in a sense, delegate all of the administrative responsibilities, but you can ask for partnership for a significant amount of them. Again, that's where I pointed out in that, I think that first slide that I spoke upon is the cost. And again, we didn't put any hard numbers. I'm sure you understand it's quite difficult, almost impossible, to put some costs associated with the different new administrative items, even along with the cost of your contribution levels. It's just as difficult to provide costing for those items until we may be hired or even asked to do a study on what those costs might be and the timing for setting things up.
Understood. Thank you very much. I think we've got another meeting scheduled in March. Sure why that's so far out. But as far as what what other things you would need from our staff to help further this process if we went in this direction, what would you need specifically from staff and council?
Rich, you could jump in if you think I've missed something. But I imagine, from a process standpoint, we'd want to start to engage with you in a formal agreement, something, even if it's just a long of like, a one or two page letter, like a statement of work where we would outline, and of course, work with Monica, that's exactly what you'd need us to do. But we would outline what services you'd like us to do, and discuss timing and cost of those, and then have that agreement signed and executed. And then from there, or within there, I think we would probably answer in more detail your questions. But it would relate to, if you have us do calculations, collecting information on the population anticipated to be covered. And then we'd also ask you for some high level benefits that might already be accrued from these same employees to the states, that we could apply some sort of general offset to get a true calculation of what it might cost. So if that's something that you're interested in having us doing, that that level of work, we feel it might be best practices for us, but also for you to agree upon as a committee to sign a statement of work and have us do that. And I would obviously just be clear and open to say, depending on how much work has already been done in the study by Bolton, in what you've already paid for that, you'd want to consider what services you'd want us to do so that you we don't duplicate any efforts to save time in both on our side, but also time and cost for your side. You know, we're here to support you, but also help, hopefully, provide advice for things to think through to help also keep costs at a minimum to you.
Thank you so much. I trust that you'd be, you both would be available for follow up questions through Ms. Minor. And then we could, not not to exhaust you when you haven't been engaged for services, but just some topical questions that may come up. Are you guys okay with that?
Sure. Yep, that's our problem.
All right, thank you.
I think their point of contact is actually Director Kennedy they've been dealing with. So that's probably who they will continue to to go through. And and I do, I'm glad that you did acknowledge that you did this free of charge, as a to show what you're capable of doing and in hopes of being hired to complete the project. So you put a lot of work into this, and I greatly appreciate that. It has opened my eyes a lot to, I knew there was work to be done, but there's a lot of, you've kind of outlined a lot of that. So I appreciate that very much. And and thank you for taking time out on a Tuesday to to really entertain us and tell us what's going on in your world. So appreciate that, Freddie and Rich. And we will be in contact, I'm sure, after they hear the other presentation in March.
Okay, that sounds great. If anything comes up, in the meantime, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Thank you. As far as communication, may I ask a clarification question from Ms. Minor? Because I thought Town Council was to go through Assistant Town Manager and Town Manager rather than department heads. Is that different now for this scope?
No, I understood that you were having communications between
Just council.
USI. Oh, yeah. It should go to the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager. Absolutely. Sorry about that.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yep, no, well taken. Point well taken. All right, next is a Finance Committee recommendation. Ms. Larson.
Good evening. So we had our Finance Committee meeting last week with all the Finance Committee members. And as a group, they're like to recommend the appointment of Nicole Williams as Chairperson and Randy Sotomayor, I hope I got that right, as Vice Chairperson for the Finance Committee. Both are very knowledgeable. They have thrown out great ideas already. In addition, we just want to also put out there that we would like council to reconsider how the appointments of the Chair and Vice Chair is done, instead of having the council appoint them, let the committee choose and appoint them themselves.
Okay, so thank you for those recommendations. Do I have a motion to accept Nicole Williams as Chair and Randolph Sotomayor as Vice Chair?
I would make a motion to approve those nominations as presented to the Finance Committee.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
I just, I think, I'd like to know a little bit more about their qualifications, given that it's a new committee. And I hear you on, we want to allow our committees to have autonomy. But given that it's brand new, I just, and because we're still kind of seeing what the impact will be, that's all. And they could obviously disagree. That was just my only concern.
Yeah, they were put forth last council meeting with all their qualifications.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor for the recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you both for stepping up for that. And in the future, we will, I guess it's a different time that we will reconsider the way that it's worded on that ordinance. So thank you. All right, next up would be the extension of general election voting hours for Director Pips.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, the Board of Supervisors of Elections was requesting an extension of the voting hours for the general election. In our charter, it's established at noon till eight, unless the Town Council would like to extend that. My understanding was that it was, it had always been seven in the morning till eight, and then I found out that was not correct. So in order to extend the hours, we would need to either change the charter, or the Town Council would need to adopt a resolution extending the hours. On top of that, the Board of Supervisors of Elections would like to suggest, recommend that the charter be changed so that it is permanent, and we don't have to do this again the next time we have elections.
All right, any questions for Director Pips on this item?
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward, because I had people would ask me, why do you guys vote at noon to eight? Anyway, so charter would require legislation, and then a first reading and a second reading.
Public hearings.
Public hearing and all that. So what that suggests, we probably couldn't do it in time for the upcoming elections, is what you're telling us, right?
Correct.
Because the primary is going to be in March.
The primary will be in March.
So that would apply to the primary hour.
This extension, no, this extension would only apply to the general election. The primary election will only be run from noon, only because we have such low participation in the primary. And I know that's kind of a, maybe a chicken egg kind of question. And that's something we could consider in the legislation as well, is just for all elections to make it from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, or 7:00 to 7:00, whatever.
I just hope that doesn't, I hear you when you say participation and turnout, but I think it's going to cause some confusion. But, okay. But so otherwise, a resolution is a more straightforward process.
That is the tool that's required for the Town Council.
And then the next council can tackle that.
Correct.
So I'm looking for consensus to move this legislation forward. Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, and I am as well. So we'll see this in just a second. All right, that does bring us to legislation. Ms. Minor?
Of the Local Government Article of the Annuated Code of Maryland and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Ordinance 25-01 as presented?
I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-01, annexation development as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do recall that I thought Councilman Winkler had suggested some minor revisions. Is that incorporated into this document?
They have been.
And, again, just for my clarification, this would, again, just strengthen our ordinance with respect to annexation and the five year rule. It's codified and stronger.
Correct.
So we don't have, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 25-01. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to ordinance 25-02.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, ordinance 25-02, Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget for Second Reading and Consideration of Adoption. The Ordinance Concerning Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget for the Purpose of Amending the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget to Reflect the Activities of the 2023 B Series Bonds and All Matters Generally Relating Thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-02 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 25-02, Amendment to the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2024 Financial Plan Budget as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And as I remember, in our first reading, and from the Finance Director, there was, there's really no impact to our current, the current budget.
That would be correct.
Thank you.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that brings us to our final piece of legislation for the evening, Resolution 25-01, the extension of the May 6, 2025 general election voting hours.
Madam Mayor, Resolution 24, 25-01, for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning extension of the May 6, 2025 general election voting hours for the purpose of extending the voting hours for the May 6, 2025 general election from the time specified in the Charter of the Town of La Plata, C 7-10, and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 25-01 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I have a, I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2501 to extend the general election voting hours as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to new business reports from the dais. Do you have anything to report, Councilman Trolinger?
Yes. Keepla Plata, beautiful met yesterday. Unfortunately, because of some technological issues with town email that I had, wasn't able to attend. But Director Pips did give me the notes, and I just wanted to brief council that, a couple of the highlights, there's going to be a Birding 101 workshop at CSM during Nature Fest, May 31. There's going to be Paint the Town, June 14, from 10 to 1, with six groups with pollinator-related information and activities, and sidewalk art. It's going to be a lot of things to look forward to in the spring with Keepla Plata Beautiful. They really do a good job of highlighting the aesthetic nature of our town and enhancing it. Also, there's going to be a litter index, March 2, at 9:00 AM at Town Hall. They're working on a number of other items as it relates to Earth Day at Phoenix Run with Will's Group, which we will keep you posted on. And the full notes will be available on the town website. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission met on January 15. I don't know why I said June, January 15. We got a, some updates with respect to the pedestrian signals to be turned on sometime, hopefully this year, on Charles Street. We also got some additional information with respect to the traffic signal at Charles Street and Willow Lane. Hopefully, in a couple of months, that'll be in place, we hope. And then also, a brief update on the radio station road walkway. They're still finalizing some final easement issues, some final issues with the county with respect to the entrance to Laurel Spring, and then some other glitches. But hopefully, by the, toward the end of this year, maybe we'll see some construction. We will see. The unknown, and I haven't checked, but I will go back and check, is that I'm not sure, and I think it's a positive news, that the governor's proposed budget did not make any cuts to this particular project. I think I saw that. But I'll, I'll double check, double check and get back to the council on that. I don't think they did. So I think that's important. And I just wanted to add one personal note, if I may, that I forgot last week, the passing of a former county commissioner and delegate Murray Levy. I knew him quite well. And then unfortunately, the untimely passing of a well-known town resident who was actively engaged in the Port tobacco theater and the park, Richard Recaway. So I, and I apologize, I slipped my mind last week. So I just wondered if I could just bring that attention to those, service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. They will be missed, for sure. And my report, last Friday, few of us, I don't know what we were thinking, we decided to go up to Sandy Point and do the support Tim Gowen, who's a 76-year-old who is with the Special Olympics. He did a 24-hour plunge. And the chief and I, and Becca, and Jason Posey, and Jason's son, Noah, all went up there. And we only did one dip. Well, Noah did two. And I think Jason probably did two. And Becca did, oh, gosh, she didn't do, make it the full 24 hours due to, yeah, she did many. And it was cold. When I went out there, I bumped into a big chunk of ice. So it was cold. But it was all for Special Olympics. And to have a 76-year-old who actually was the recipient of his first medal, Eunice Kennedy gave it to him. And Eunice Kennedy's grandson, Tim, was there, Tim Shriver. So Eunice Kennedy Shriver and Tim Shriver. So it was such an event, an unforgettable. And, you know, I guess the chief didn't get enough of it, because Friday, he and some of his members of his team, his police department are going to do the plunge again. Now, I, I saw that the weather's going to be a little less chilly. And when we went at 6:00 PM at night, it was dark, it was cold, and I didn't know if Bruce was out there getting ready to wait for us in that water. But thank you for doing that and raising awareness for Special Olympics. Chief and Captain Payne and Captain Norris and I all attended the Martin Luther King Pre- Prayer Breakfast, and that was always a nice time there to to interact with the community. Coming up, there's two events, one is Meet Your Delegation, if you have the opportunity to go up to Annapolis on Thursday, February 6, at 6:00 PM up in the Senate Miller's Wing, they're going to have all of our delegation there, so you can interact with them, and Selby's is cooking food, so that's well worth the trip. And then, they're still looking for volunteers for the Night to Shine on February 7th, they're looking for buddies. If you have never had the opportunity to go to a special, it's Those Living with Disabilities Prom, where they are the guest of honors, it is the most memorable event that you will ever go to, and so I know the chief is gonna be there again, as well as I am, and there's nothing that that's better than having people dance, and you don't have to dance there, you just watch them, and it's it's magical. So if you are interested in that, please look online, John Flatley is very much involved with that, so contact him, or you can contact me, and we can give you information, because we're always looking for buddies. And with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 7:30, I hope you all have a great evening and be safe going home, thank you.